I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of May 18th, 2017, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Miratato?
Here.
Trustee Pojack?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call to order the public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018. So if there's anyone here that would like to address this board regarding the annual appropriation ordinance, please step forward. Being none, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing. Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Community announcements. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
National Police Week runs through this Saturday, May 20th. To commemorate the week, the Glendale Heights Police Department has been handing out blue ribbons for residents to put on their vehicles as a symbol of respect to those who have laid down their lives in the line of duty and to show support to law enforcement officers protecting our neighborhoods and streets. Blue ribbons are available at the police department. Thank you to the men and women of the Glendale Heights Police Department for keeping our friends and families safe. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Please join us for our next Neighborhood Watch Meeting scheduled for Wednesday, May 24th, at 7:30 PM. The Neighborhood Watch Meeting will be hosted at the Almond Clubhouse located at 1960 South Brandon Drive. We will go over crime statistics and other local community concerns. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights, in partnership with the FOP Lodge 52 and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce invites you to the 18th Annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Friday, June 16th, with a 9:00 AM shotgun start at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for Make-A-Wish Illinois, FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund. If you would like more information, wish to become a host sponsor, or to make a raffle prize donation, please call Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018, or the mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Help us make the 18th Annual Charity Golf Classic another great success. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The next coffee with the mayor and village board is scheduled for Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 AM to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any questions, comments, or suggestions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Spring yard waste curbside collections are made on your regular or holiday-scheduled pickup days by Republic Services. All yard waste must be placed in either biodegradable bags or in cans clearly labeled "Yard Waste Only." Biodegradable paper bags or cans must not exceed 32 gallons in size and 50 pounds in weight. Brush must be bundled not to exceed four feet in length, two feet in diameter, and 50 pounds in weight. Please remember, all single-family and multifamily residential units are required to utilize Republic Services for the collection and disposal of their refuse. When placing your refuse in recycling totes, curbside, or out for collection, containers must be placed at the curbside immediately adjacent to the street without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage or recycling bins. For any suggestions, please call Republic Services at (847) 981-0091.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your 2017, 2018 Village Vehicle sticker today. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 AM July 1st, 2017, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18, and trucks with B-plates are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding Village Vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Miratato?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited during the month of May between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on one specific day. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on our street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. National Public Works Week is May 21st through the 27th, and the Village of Glendale Heights Public Work Department will be celebrating with a roadshow to local schools. They will be explaining what Public Works staff to the community and the equipment utilized to maintain village. The Water Pollution Control Facility will also host an open house to teach about village wastewater treatment plant for any schools that are interested. For more information, please contact the Public Works Department at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojack?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Summer is almost here, and the GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend on May 27th. Purchase your pool pass before May 22nd and receive a discounted rate. Benefits to becoming a member include priority entrance at 11:30 AM and discounts on swim lessons, swim team registration, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. On Monday, May 29th, Memorial Day, at 11:00 AM at Veterans Memorial Park, we will honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving our country. The Glendale Heights DFW Post 2377 will conduct a brief fallen warrior ceremony, followed by a solemn wreath-laying ceremony. This includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, and patriotic acknowledgement. In observance of Memorial Day, village offices will be closed on Monday, May 29th. For more information, please call (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroeder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a variety of positions at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club, at the GH2O Aquatic Center, and the Glendale Heights Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from kitchen help, waitstaff, and banquet servers at the Glendale Heights Golf Club to lifeguards at the Aquatic Center and seasonal youth program counselors at the Sports Hub. Gain valuable experience and make friends for a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have two proclamations. The first one being a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamations.
No objection.
Trustee Miratato?
Go for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Keith, I guess this is yours.
I think it's my turn. Thank you, mayor and board, for giving me the opportunity to speak about Tree City USA and the fact that the Village of Glendale Heights received the Tree City USA Award for the 20th consecutive year. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the USDA Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters, and it provides direction, technical assistance, public attention, and national recognition for urban and community forestry programs in thousands of towns and cities that more than 135 million Americans call home. This year, one of our big things that we want to mention and give the public some knowledge on is that we are in the process of planting over 400 trees to start the reforestation of the community. And so those trees will be coming starting the first week in June. We just met with the contractor today, so we're excited to tell people that those will be coming out. So that will not take care of everybody's tree, but that's the starting point. And thank you to the village board for getting us the means to make sure that we can get these started. We also had an Arbor Day celebration on Friday, April 28th, and the Parks Division, along with the Village of Glendale Heights preschool students, celebrated Arbor Day by planting two trees on the village's campus. PATH After-School Program students participated in exercises to learn benefits of trees and their role in the environment as well. At this time, I'd like to invite Chuck Dombrowski, the Village Arborist, to come up. He's got a few posters and pictures to show, as well as to present to the mayor and board the award for the 20th consecutive year of receiving the Arbor Day thing. Before I do that, though, I do want to take this opportunity to thank Chuck, to thank Tracy and Jackie and the rest of the park staff for all the work that they have done to make sure that we receive this award every year. So Chuck, go ahead.
Thank you, Keith. Having said all that, for 20 years, the National Arbor Day Foundation has given us a little plaque, and I'd like to present that to the mayor and the board at this time and sneak some pictures in there with you, as I got some props. Also, the PATH After-School Youth Program made coasters for the mayor and all the trustees this year.
Thanks.
That's so nice.
We like presents.
And Chuck, can you remind the residents of why we're reforesting? That we eradicated the emerald ash borer in the community?
I'm sorry?
Out of the schedule. Can you just, Keith talked about reforestation, but I want to remind the residents what that was for.
So when the emerald ash borer, which was an insect that infected our ash trees in town not too many years ago, we lost almost 3,000 ash trees, which was about 20-something percent of our urban forest in Glendale Heights. So now we're starting the process to replant and reforest our parkways and parks.
Please forgive.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you want me to go up here? Thank you, mayor and board. Without you, it is impossible to get everything done that we have done for 20 years with our open forest.
Thank you, but you guys are the workers, so. Great job. Great job. Thanks, Chuck. It's pretty.
Very nice.
Okay, next in our list. We'd like to take a few minutes to recognize the Glenside Middle School Builders Club, which is sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights. The Builders Club at Glenside provides students the opportunities to work together with other students in service to school and community. It is a student-led organization that provides opportunities to perform service, build character, and develop leadership. At these community service events, the students show the ability to listen, communicate, and serve others, and accepting and welcoming attitude toward others' differences, and most importantly, a caring and empathetic demeanor. Some activities that the Glenside Builders Club participated in over the course of the school year is reading books with residents at Sunrise Living, gift wrapping at Wesdora, making care boxes at Phil's Friends, sorting at Scares, playing bingo with residents at Sunrise Living, and packaging food at Kids Against Hunger. So if we could have all the participants in the Builders Club come forward. We have certificates for all of you. That's a leadership award presented to... The student's name, and in recognition for your participation and leadership role with the Glenside Middle School Builders Club. And this isn't you. I knew it wasn't you. That's why I didn't read the name.
Have to pass them out.
That's you. I knew it. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Olivia?
You're welcome.
Thank you. If you guys would stay up here after you get your certificates, I bet they want your pictures. Peyton? Congratulations to you guys. Great job. Anna? You're welcome. Hannah? You're getting better.
You are. This is working out.
Who's that?
No.
No. I knew that.
Maybe he's the first one.
Me, the first one? The first one was...
Ollie. Got it. Great job. Ricky? Great job. O'Reilly?
Yep.
Okay. Sometimes it's hard. Sonya? Sonya? You're not Ernie. You want to be? We can make it. Cynthia? That works. Great job. Jasper? You're not Vivian. Okay.
Are you Sal?
Oh, my gosh.
Ernie?
What's that? He's not with us. Ernie? That works. Thank you. And Vivian? Does that work?
Thank you.
Thank... Go up. We need to stand up. And we have certificates for the adults, too. Thank you for working with the kids and bringing them here.
All is very shy and very shy.
Better sure in the middle.
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Great job. Thank you for your charity service. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stranger, how are you?
I don't think so. Oh, next on our agenda. Chief Flint? I think this one's yours.
Thank you, mayor and board. It's a recognition kind of night. I can get Justin Blondin and Nathan Setwitz up here. We're here tonight to present lifesaving awards to two of our patrol officers. Justin Blondin and Nathan Setwitz. Close enough. On March 17th, Officers Blondin and Setwitz, about 10 o'clock at night, dispatched a 2130 Almond for a subject who was having trouble breathing. Officer Blondin arrived on scene, quickly realized subject, 59-year-old William Gibbler, was unresponsive and in full arrest. He waited to have paramedics expedite. He immediately began chest compressions and CPR. Officer Setwitz arrived with his AED, along with Bloomingdale Paramedics. They both began CPR. Bloomingdale Paramedics were able to apply their AED, and after, what, six shocks, were able to get a pulse back to Mr. Gibbler. Their lifesaving actions, heroic actions, quick-thinking actions, saved Mr. Gibbler for that time, to be transported to hospital and be transported into the intensive care unit at Glen Oaks Hospital. So with that, for the outstanding work, quick thinking, fast-on-their-feet thinking, we're presenting lifesaving awards to Officer Blondin and Officer Setwitz. And for Officer Blondin, by and through your actions, dedication to duty, took substantial steps, which led to the preservation of life. Thank you again for letting us present these awards. Pretty life-changing moment for these officers when they get there and recognize what needs to be done and actually have the mindset to follow through and use the training that they've been provided and that they use every day to go out there and do something a little bit different on a day-to-day basis and save a life. So, great job, guys.
Ditto. Great job. Thank you. And this would be yours, Jennifer.
Mayor and board, thank you for the opportunity to make a brief presentation on the 18th Annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic, which will be taking place on Friday, June 16th, at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. The past 17 years, the Charity Golf Classic has raised over $420,000 for a number of charities, including Family and Faith Food Pantry, Family Shelter Service, Breast Cancer Awareness, Friends for Don Darby, Nicholas Christopherakis Fund, Glen Oaks Hospital Foundation, and many more. This year's event will be raising funds for Make-A-Wish Illinois, the FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund. There are many ways that the local businesses can help to make this year's event a great one. If you are a business owner or operator, there are a number of sponsorships available to you, including hole sponsors, event sponsors, lunch sponsors, beverage cart sponsors, and many more. If you are a resident and want to participate in the Charity Golf Classic, there are many ways for you to help as well. Join us for golf and/or dinner, as we are always looking for more participants to play in the event and volunteers to run our on-course games. This year again, we'll have another great way to participate in the event, and that is through the purchase of raffle tickets for the event. This year's grand prize will be $1,000, and these tickets are available through any of the committee members or by contacting Glendale Lakes Golf Course or the mayor's office. Before I end my presentation, here's a little recap from last year's event and some of what might you expect to see in June. Mayor and board, thank you again for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes on this year's Charity Golf Classic. If you have any questions on this event, please feel free to contact the chairman of the Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic Committee, Sharon Sullivan, at (630) 909-5306; Village President Linda Jackson at (630) 909-5303; or myself at (630) 260-0095. Registration and sponsorship materials are also available online at www.glandalelakes.com. We look forward to a great event and raising a lot of money for some great causes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hoping to have a lot of people participate this year. Now we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Miratato?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
One of them, how long will a project like this take?
They actually can get it done in just a couple of, a couple of days.
Could just a couple of days? What kind of damage will occur? Because I know it's a residential area. What, what'll occur? What will we have to look forward to?
It's going to be a couple of holes in each side of the trench, and in the proposal is included restoration with dirt and seed, like we always do.
So it won't be a real big, major project, so shouldn't you have any issues then?
No, we shouldn't.
That was it? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business and new business. Number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items number two and four. Trustee Schmidt?
I move that we waive first reading on new business items number two and four.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on new business items two and four. Go to number two. It's an ordinance to amend a previously approved planned unit development for High Grove Center of Dupage East Campus in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2017-31. Trustee Meritato?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-31 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to approve and authorize the annual appropriation ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And this is first reading. Number four is an ordinance to waive bid, accept the proposal of C&amp;R Directional Boring Incorporated for boring services, and authorize the issuance of a notice of award for the street light fixture replacement project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading was waived, and this would be ordinance number 2017-32. Trustee Pojack?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Light?
I just have, just a couple of small questions. One of them, how long will a project like this take?
They actually can get it done in just a couple of, a couple of days.
Could just a couple of days? What kind of damage will occur? Because I know it's a residential area. What, what'll occur? What will we have to look forward to?
It's going to be a couple of holes in each side of the trench, and in the proposal is included restoration with dirt and seed, like we always do.
So it won't be a real big, major project, so shouldn't you have any issues then?
No, we shouldn't.
That was it? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-32 is approved. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items, but also, there is no committee of the whole tonight, correct?
Correct.
Staff, no committee of the whole. So we open up discussion to any topic anybody wants to get up and talk about. Yep. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Kevin. I recently just took over as Chief of Staff to Representative Deb Conroy, so that's why I'm here tonight. Just kind of wanted to introduce myself, and only if you, if I introduced myself early, I would've told everyone in the, as constituents. I know all of Glendale Heights is in our district, so if you guys have any issues or concerns that you'd like to see the representative work on, please contact our office, and I'll, or I'll gladly give you my contact information. You can reach out to me.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Kevin.
Thank you for coming. If nobody else has anything, then a motion... Trustee Pojack?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
Wow, very good. Thank you, everyone.